Rockford Forward is a group of Rockford business people. We were formed several years ago. This is our third election cycle that we've worked on. For those who seem to be confused about it, we have been in the paper times before, but that includes myself, Neil Blakesley, Tom and Tracy Rich, Candy Lankeyoni, Miranda Pell, Dave Rasmussen, Steve Jaswick, Linda Southwick, Jerry Coon, Tom Cronkright, Dr. Michael Schibler, and Bill Jackson. So that's what makes up Rockford Forward. We are not a partisan group. It was formed out of the business community in Rockford to try to look out, see the interests -- that people can see the interests that we see in the greater community and have some continuity out there. The candidates here tonight, we have three of our five candidates. There are two positions for Rockford City Council that are open, and we have Charles Baker -- Look, I'm going to -- And Lankeye on the end, and our incumbent in the middle. I'm drawing a blank.[69.22][69.22](Laughter) That's what you get when you're old. My wife will verify that's what you get when you're old. You get distracted from time to time. And Tammy Burkstrom, the incumbent. This is a very important election. There's a lot of things been going on in the city, just like the school generated a great deal of interest. They have so many candidates running for a few positions. We have five candidates running for two positions here. So it's important that we distinguish between those folks. The questions that we're going to ask were solicited from the community. They are not from Rockford Forward, although we did fine-tune them to make sure there wasn't anything with too much of an edge or to cause any problems or overheat the discussion, if you will. Each candidate will be given a one-minute opening, a statement, and at the end a two-minute closing. I will present the prepared questions, and you'll have two minutes for the prepared questions. They have not seen these questions before tonight again. They were from the public, and we fine-tuned them, but they have not seen them. The order of response will go in alphabetical order and continue to rotate through until we're done. They will receive notices of their time. Tracy's in the middle. She's going to put up a 30-second sign when you got the note, and she's going to stand up and sit you down if you go too much time. There are no audience questions. We have time constraints. If you have a question that you need to have answered, there's two things. I suspect everyone up there will have their email available to you. It's either in the paper or in their materials already. And our program is being taped right now and will be forwarded to Rockford Forward. You can also send questions to Rockford Forward. Those questions will be directed to the candidates and recirculated with their answers to the public on our Rockford Forward Facebook page. So that's the availability for that sort of thing. I asked it, and we didn't have any problem in the first group, so I don't anticipate problems here, but please show courtesy by not having individual discussions in the back or interrupting anyone while they're speaking. The only other -- I guess I covered the taping. That is going to be on Beyond the Rock at the high school sometime later in the week. Will it be tomorrow?
Should.
Should be tomorrow, so that you can --[211.68][211.68](Laughter) And it will be forwarded to Rockford Forward for our Facebook page where you can re-watch it and you can tell your friends about it who may not be here tonight. So with nothing more to go on that, again, I'm going to give you a chance to introduce yourselves. You have one minute, and we'll start with Charles and go through on that order.
I've got a pretty big voice. Hi, my name is Charles Baker. You might have seen one or two of my signs around town lately. I live right here in downtown Rockford. I've been a Rockford resident for the past five years. In my previous life, I moved around a lot, and when I moved to Rockford, I knew that I truly found a home in a place that I wanted to raise my family and really grow myself and grow with my community. So I really want to bring a young family's perspective to the Rockford City Council. I really want to focus on the sustainability of our community, both environmentally and financially, so that we can maintain the same level of charm and sophistication that we've had for so many years before. So I would like to bring my education and experience to the Rockford City Council, and I just -- I appreciate you all for being here tonight.
Tammy Burkstrom, I've lived in Rockford for probably, I think, around 39 years now. We lived up on Summit Street when we were first married. We lived in a little rented house, lot of house on 20 South Monroe, quarter of 20 South Monroe. And 20 years later, we moved back up to Summit Street about a block from where we started off. So we've been in Rockford, raised our family here in Rockford. But my experience with Rockford goes back even further than that. I formerly worked for various newspapers, the Grand Rapids Press, the Advance Newspapers, and I covered the Rockford City Council, the Planning Commission, and a lot of northern municipalities. And so I understand, you know, how important it is to have good representative government and been on the council this last four years, running again, and looking to continue the good things that we have here in Rockford. Thank you.
My name's Lankeye. Moved to Rockford five years ago. Was from the east side of the state. Me and my wife moved our two children over here. They were both high school age when we moved over here. Bought a business in Rockford on 14 Mile two years ago, well, year and a half ago now. Got really interested in the community when we moved here. Got more involved with the community once my business opened up. Got really involved with the Chamber. Started getting really involved with the downtown area and the growth of the community. And really looking forward to serving the community and helping it grow and sustain the viability it has right now. It's a great place to be, and we need to keep that going. We need to keep bringing in, you know, people to our area.
Please, and you both -- you've all hit this a little bit in your introduction, but a little more detail would be great. Please describe your involvement in the Rockford community. What have you done?
Well, again, I would go back to my reporting career because that is where I really got to learn a lot about how different municipal governments work. Back in those days, the newspaper covered everything. Unfortunately, we don't have that in-depth coverage of municipal government and even school board government as we used to have. But that did spark my interest. I could remember going to those meetings at City Hall and seeing Jack Schwab and Neil and Rod and other people. So I kind of got a feel for the people in the community and what they were doing for the community. Neil, I lost myself a little bit there.
Just your involvement, and anytime you want a question to answer.
So beyond that, I think because of that involvement, I was asked to be on a couple committees, the Parks Committee. We had parks plans that take four years to put together, or every four years, excuse me, to put together. So I was on a couple Parks Committees. I was asked to join the Planning Commission, which was a great experience to find out, you know, the development in Rockford and how those decisions are made and what gets factored into those things. I did serve on the Board of Review for a number of years as well. That was interesting. That's where you go when you want to talk about your property taxes, and I got a good feel for what that's all about. I ran for Rockford City Council, I guess it was eight, 10 years ago, and I did serve for a four-year term at that time. Chose not to run for two years, and then I did run again four years ago. So that kind of wraps up my involvement, I think. Thank you.
My involvement with Rockford started with the Chamber of Commerce, me and my wife and my children, volunteering at different events, whether it be the start of summer, Harvest Fest, just all the events that we have here in Rockford. And that got me and my wife both involved in the community. And, you know, once I started my business here in Rockford, being part of the high school was -- in the school district was very important to both of us. Both of our kids went to Rockford schools, and being in the community, helping in any way we can with the schools. We started volunteering with the schools a lot, with the sports teams, with the athletic department, with the plays, with anything that we could do to help the community out. I think it's very important for our community to be involved with our school district as much as possible. And the way that the last couple council meetings I've went to, there's a great back-and-forth and working with the schools. You know, we're talking about safety in the schools in the earlier meeting, and, you know, I heard that talked about in the council meetings. So the way that they both work together and being a volunteer and going to those different things and helping out at the different events that you can be at, I think is very important. And I look forward to continuing doing that.
Yes, my involvement within Rockford is really through the volunteer and community service work that I do through numerous community service organizations. I'm also heavily involved throughout Kent County with the YMCA Health Equity Committee. I serve on several Board of Directors with local nonprofits throughout the Kent County area. Before moving to Rockford, I was heavily involved in St. Paul, Minnesota, serving on numerous boards and different committees there, different committees there as well. And so I really want to bring that level of experience to the Rockford City Council. I really appreciate Tammy's level of experience and having served on city council for so long. And I just want to enhance the current city council's experience in serving the community. I have a background in social work and macro-level planning at a social work level, building community-based programs throughout cities for migrant and immigrant communities, also developmentally disabled individuals and mental health individuals as well, all through the use of grant and community funding without seeking additional millage of tax dollars, but all through publicly available grant funding through the federal and state government. Again, I would really like to be able to bring that level of experience to the Rockford City Council so that we can continue to utilize federal and state dollars as opposed to increasing our millages within Rockford. I would also add -- thank you. I would also add that I'm very passionate about civic duty and local involvement in my community. This community has given so much back to me that I would like to give back to it as well, so.
In lieu of the recently failed millage proposal regarding parks and streets, how would you address the city's aging infrastructure?
That's a good question. If you don't get the funding from somewhere, you have to find, just like a business, if you don't have the money to get something done, you have to find other ways to get them done. Because regardless, it does have to be done, it does have to be upgraded, it does have to be fixed. The different things that you can do is reach out to the community, get the community involved, get -- ask the community for their perspective on what needs to be done and how we could go about getting it done. Search out different state avenues, contact people in Lansing, just use everything at your disposal and, you know, find a way to get it done. I mean, that's what, you know, most of us people just do in life. You know, if it doesn't present itself one way, we find a way to get it done. And that's the same way you have to approach, I believe, any problem or any situation. You have to find a way to overcome it because not everything is there and not everything is accessible. You do have to go above and beyond to get things done a lot of times, so.
You know, I really think we want to separate the parks millage from our city's infrastructure, right? So when we think about our parks and our city's infrastructure, I think of those as two similar but related items. So when we look at our city's infrastructure and looking at the public works and our streets and our upgrades that we want to do with our downtown area and the surrounding areas and bringing in new communities to our sewer resources and stuff, that's really what I think of when we're talking about infrastructure. When I think about the parks millage, then it's really to enhance and continue to maintain the parks that we already have established. Look, Rockford has some of the best parks in all of Kent County. We have some of the most beautiful natural resources that are available to us throughout the state of Michigan, I would argue. The trails that we have, all of those are being used by the greater Kent County and Rockford residents, Rockford residents alike. I don't feel that Rockford residents should have to solely own the burden of supporting parks that are available to all Kent County residents. Those parks allow people from outside of our community to come in and enjoy our community, use our businesses, see how great we are as a community. But I also feel like there are other opportunities to enhance the funding of our parks through state, federal, and local dollars that do not include increased millages within our community. I would also say that it would be who has as a city council to have a conversation with the community, to have an understanding as to whether or not the community supports an additional millage to support our parks. And what is the messaging that we have around that parks millage? I think that while the parks millage was needed at the time, I think that there were a lot of competing forces that were fighting against that millage, and I think we should really engage the community to ensure that our messaging is appropriately when seeking those millage dollars.
I think, Charles, kind of hit the nail on the head about making sure that people understand the issue. And just for a little bit of background, the millage, although it was a parks millage, it was kind of an attempt to get to increase the budget for infrastructure by carving out the parks budget from our general fund so that we did in fact have money in the general fund to pay for this needed infrastructure, which we do need. And I think a big thing that we can do as a city council and that we have to do, and maybe we didn't do it as adequately as we could have, is to ensure that our residents know the importance of this, the importance of fixing aging infrastructure. As to the parks themselves, I think that there have been some changes in how they are maintained and prioritized, and in addition to maybe grants or what have you, it's possible that our service clubs or individuals can help that. I, you know, not sure if this was allowed or not, but I took my leaf blower down on the boardwalk to blow leaves out there several times because that boardwalk does tend to get very slippery when it's wet and there are leaves there. I'm not advocating that people maintain the parks, but it is an option. But again, the priority, the bottom line is, I think we need better communication, more communication with our residents so that we all understand what exactly we do need to fix. I know that city has a capital improvement plan, and they have prioritized, done great work to prioritize what needs to be done and how it needs to be done. We just need to, if it does indeed need to be increased budget for that, we need to make sure that we made that case to our residents.
What would be your number-one priority as a city council member?
Well, I think my number-one, I think the number-one priority of the city council is to be a representative form of government for the people of the community of Rockford. I think it's really about creating a space for conversations with each of our neighbors. Regardless of your political ideology, we are all neighbors and community members. And when we're looking at local city elections and local city businesses, those national politics shouldn't really play a role in what we're doing, and we should really allow ourselves the space to be able to have those conversations with each of our neighbors. When I think about the most recent park millage and the way that we communicate and have conversations about that, I think this is a really good example to get out and have those different conversations with our neighbors, to have a better understanding of what that millage means and what that would represent for our city. I think if we are able to use some of those dollars to continue to work on our infrastructure that really benefits us overall, it drives business, it drives entrepreneurship and community, and allows our parks to continue to thrive and bring people in from greater Kent County to our wonderful city. I totally got off track there on what the actual question was, but again, I think it's just about collaboration, collaboration with the greater Rockford community. I've been so appreciative of being able to go out and knock doors and spend time down with Thad and Chris and all of the people at City Hall. And even if I don't win, I feel like I've won because I've been able to meet so many great people in this community. And what I can tell you is that we all want the same thing, and that's really amazing Rockford.
Number-one priority? Well, to me, the city does do a very good job. Our city staff does a wonderful job. They're juggling a lot. And a lot of people come to City Hall with their different issues, and, you know, I think they handle them very well. My number-one priority, again, kind of going back to my journalism career, is I think residents need to be more informed about the issues that we're facing in advance of, you know, when the city council might actually be taking action on those issues. The more input we can have from residents, the more inclusive we can be with our decisions, I think is hugely important, and I think that will help us in the long run when we're making decisions about the library or our water system or we have a big development that's, you know, going to be happening on Main Street presumably within a couple of years. And those are things that residents need to know about. So my number-one priority would be communication with residents.
I'd piggyback off that. I think communication would be my number-one priority. You know, we do a great job, like Charles said, of going out and knocking on doors and meeting people at this time. It's after this is all over and the people are on their boards and they're doing what they're doing in their day-to-day life, you still got to get out in the community and you still got to talk to people. So when the parks and millages come up, it's not just something that's being put in front of them to vote on at that particular time. You got to stay engaged with the community regardless of a background, regardless of a political side that they are on. If you keep the communication lines open, I feel just like in business, whether you're, you know, managing five people or you're managing 200 people, that communication has to be open and it has to be open constantly. It can't just be when, you know, a certain time arises or a millage comes up or an election happens. That's when you disenfranchise some people. And I believe, you know, with open communication and continued communication, it will continue to grow and be better and be an even better place than it is right now. So communication, I agree, would be the number-one priority.
This is probably a short response, but feel free to expand. And I think we're -- Tammy on this one. Have you read the city charter?
I haven't read it. I occasionally refer to it to look up certain things, but I have not read it.
No, I have not read it in its entirety. I just downloaded it actually this morning.
So I've read most of it. So in my day job, I'm the Medicare compliance officer for a large insurance company, and so I read federal regulations, the state regulations on a regular basis. And so I have read a fair amount of the city's charter.
In your opinion, how effective is city management in servicing the needs of the city residents and executing on the vision set by the city council?
I believe, you know, from my five years of living in Rockford, from my point of view, I think it's a very good relationship. I believe that, you know, they work together well. If you just read what's online and you read what's on Facebook, there's a lot of people that are disenfranchised, but I think that goes back to the communication portion of it. I think the city does an amazing job, and the people that are in their positions do the best to their abilities. Can it be better? Yes, it can always be better, but I think it can get better just with communication and talking. But the job that they do is admirable, and, you know, I believe that we can do a better one, but they're doing a great job right now.
From what I've seen, it's a very collaborative relationship. I mean, I congratulate Thad and the rest of the city staff on the wonderful job that they've been able to do since they've come into office. They had a, you know, a legacy to overcome, and I think Thad and the rest of the city's staff has done a really great job. What I've really appreciated seeing is the relationship that city council has with the city staff and how they augment one another. What I really think I would like to bring to the city council is to continue to mature that relationship between the city council and the city manager and the city staff so that we truly can be a representative form of government, so that we are going out and meeting with our neighbors and our constituents, having those conversations, and then bringing those opinions back to the city staff and the city manager about the direction of the city. When we talk about the use of our ARPA dollars, right, I think it's the city's, the city council's responsibility to highlight and advocate for a direction of what we should be using those funds for, setting a strategic initiative in conjunction with the city manager as to what's feasible, what can we do, what can we request. And so to continue that level of collaboration. But I also think that it's city council's responsibility to provide a level of oversight and how we're using the millage and tax dollars that are being generated from the Rockford city residents. And so I feel like with my background as a compliance officer and being able to provide that level of oversight, I think I would be a really good fit. I'm also a social worker in my background, so I bring a level of empathy and compassion while providing that level of oversight, so.
I think Thad's done a fabulous job of carrying out the vision of the city council. We also have some very great council members, not myself, not necessarily, but I can see Cheryl during the audience. She's, you know, certain people help with committees. Cheryl's been great on the whole ARPA fund, how, you know, we strategically are looking at spending those dollars should we get them. But our city staff is great. We have a super, you know, treasurer. City staff at City Hall is great. Thad is certainly always available at any time any of us has a question or a concern that we need to speak about, like, you know, immediately get a return call. So I guess overall, I would say, I think that the City Hall, city staff gets high marks in carrying out the vision of the council.
Next question, which I will start with Charles. What relevant experience do you have that would lend itself to being a good representative of the citizens of Rockford?
Again, I have, I have two master's degrees, a master's degree in social work and a master's degree in healthcare administration, both from the University of Minnesota. I've served on numerous boards, nonprofit boards, as president and vice president level. I currently serve on the YMCA Health Equity Committee, addressing health equity concerns throughout Kent County. In my day job, I'm a compliance officer, and I oversee a budgeted revenue of about $3 billion. And so if I'm able to provide that level of fiscal oversight and responsibility and adherence to state and federal guidelines, I feel like that I can do that at the city council level as well. Again, with my background in social work, I like to do that from a collaborative space and really involving the community and the folks that I work with, so the other city council members, the city manager, the city staff, to ensure that all of those objectives are being met together. And so I really just want to be able to provide my experience as a way of giving back to the community that has already given so much to me.
I think number one, the fact that I have lived and been involved in the community for many years, it's kind of given me a perspective, a history of how Rockford has grown and the changes that we've gone through. Again, my background as a reporter kind of makes me, you know, question things maybe a little more than other people might, just because I know that's important to dig into the corners, the devil's in the details on things. I also think that there are many people in the community who maybe formerly, maybe because of my background, you know, were hesitant or to bring their views or to express their views. I think, you know, things have opened up in the last 10 years or so that more people are comfortable coming to City Hall and expressing their concerns, and I hope that I have, you know, helped engender that. Also, I, again, being in this community for so long, I love this community. And it's funny, my kids, who are now mostly grown up and a couple of them moved still in the area, but they love to come back to Rockford and walk around Rockford because they think Rockford's a great community, and so I know it's special and I want to help keep it that way. Thank you.
I believe I'd be very good at this job because, you know, my entire professional career, I started working for Walmart back when Sam Walton was still alive. So I learned my core principles from, you know, what I believe was one of the great business people and great human beings around was Sam Walton. And after I left Walmart after seven years, I got into the automotive business. And I didn't really know that this is what I wanted to do for a living, but it's what I tried for a little while, and I fell in love with it, kind of like I did moving here to Rockford. And, you know, once I got into this business and I started, you know, my management career, it was all about building a team. And, you know, I moved over here five years ago with my wife. We were born and raised on the east side of Michigan in the Flynn area. And we moved over here, and the first stores I had here were in Big Rapids, and did not want to raise my kids in a college town, so literally didn't know much about the west side of the state. So we literally got on 131 and started driving up and down and found this community of Rockford and fell in love with it, stayed here. Like I said, bought my business June of '21 and started building another team there. But my whole career in the automobile business has been building teams and getting everybody to go in the same direction, you know, regardless of, you know, what's going on outside of there. You know, inside of our business, we have to, you know, grow it and move it forward. So I believe my experience in just building teamwork and communication would make me a good fit.
The, how would you, as a city council member, support the city's sustainability goals?
Well, I'd like to think that we have already. I did recently attend the report that our consultant gave, you know, that kind of sets the tone for what our next steps are. And that's a decision, decision that we're certainly going to have to make as a council. I certainly believe in sustainability and practice that my own self, although I do still have a gas lawnmower, which I still keep. But it looks good. It looks like the presentation is good. It looks like it's something that's going to be doable. It looks like it's going to be grant funded. And so I guess how I would support it is by moving it along as long as we're not putting additional expense on the community. I do support it, you know, personally, I guess, but I want to be sure that whatever we do is going to be right for the community and doesn't create any hardship for any residents. And that is what it looks like it's going to be going forward.
Well, I believe, you know, Rockford has a plan, the strategic plan, the five-year plan. To do that long-term, you know, you gotta have a viable city. And what makes our city viable is the residents of the city, the willingness of the people to volunteer into the city, the willingness of the people to come to Rockford, even from outside of the city, to come and spend money in the city, spend time in the city. So all those things will, you know, help further, you know, our sustainability in the future. To have anything that's sustainable, you have to have a good foundation. And I believe the foundation is there with the people we have in place that work at City Hall now. So to build upon that in the future is to keep your foundation rock solid like it is and then just continue to build upon the plans that are in place and make sure those plans are executed to the best of everybody's ability, and we'll be all right in the future.
What I can say is, that I've learned throughout my life, is there are a lot smarter people out there than, than myself. And I feel like in terms of sustainability, a lot of those people are members of the Sustainability Committee. We have a lot of passionate members that sit on the SUCOM, I'm gonna use the lingo, SUCOM, the SUCOM Committee, and are making some of those recommendations back to the city manager and back to the city council. And so my perspective is that I would really support the work that the Sustainability Committee is doing and also looking at the consultant survey and plan that was grant-funded and what are the recommendations for the city going forward. Look, I've got a two and a six-year-old. I want this city to be around for a long time to come, and part of doing that is making sure that we've secured enough resources, electric and water and sewer resources in a sustainable way to support our long-term future goals. I think my friend, my new friend Thad is gonna get annoyed with me on my Wacky Wednesday emails when I'm talking about the water resources for the city and where we're, where we're digging wells and my grand schemes of putting pipes all the way down 131. But I want to ask questions. I want to learn more. I want to have a really good understanding of where our water is coming from and how we support that for a long time to come, as opposed to continually looking for new well resources and other opportunities to enhance our water supply. Again, I would really look to the people in the room that are smarter than me in this regard, and that's through our consultants and our Sustainability, Sustainability Council and our city engineers as well.
As a city council member, what would you see your role in implementing the city master plan?
As a city council member, I believe our job in the master plan is to execute the plan and find a viable way to get everything in that plan to come to fruition. You put together a master plan for a reason, just, you know, like starting a business, you can't just start a business without a plan. You have to have a plan and the plan has to be executed. So as a council member, I believe our job is to dive into the plan, know everything that's in the plan and to work the plan with the other committee members as well as, you know, the City Hall. The best way to do that is with understanding and communication.
Again, I think the role of city, city council is to be a form of representative government, and when we develop a master plan for the city, it's really our responsibility to get out into the community and meet with our neighbors and make sure that they have an understanding of what that master city plan looks like for them as well, what it means for their city. They are the ones that, that have elected us and we're supposed to be their voice within the city council. It also, it's also our responsibility to then support the city manager and the city staff in executing on that goal, whether or not that be with our time or expertise or additional resources. I think that that's what we're here to do, to support the master city plan. As I alluded to in my, my previous comment, I really defer to the experts in the room. We have some really smart people that are participating in the master city planning, the Downtown Development Authority, the Sustainability Committee, and really working with them and what their recommendations are in terms of the master city plan and what is their input and how do we, how do we then communicate that out to the city residents and get their perspective on it? And then it's our job as city council members to bring that information to the city manager and work directly with them in how we implement it. Or if, if there are questions that are being raised within our city by our neighbors, then how do we answer those questions? And how do we have an open dialogue within our city council meetings to address some of those concerns? I find open dialogue to be really important. Thad always comes prepared to our city council meetings and is always open to having an open conversation during those meetings. And so I think it's our job as a city council member to ask the questions and have a robust discussion with our city manager.
So we did have a, a nice joint meeting with the Planning Commission not too long ago. And the Planning Commission has worked on this plan for months, if not longer. So many community surveys, there was a lot of input and the plan, it looks great. And as you know, it kind of sets the tone for what we do in Rockford for, you know, certainly with regard to any development. We have a fabulous Planning Commission that, when I was on it, often met twice a month, and the meetings were long. They put in a lot of time and effort into the plan. So beyond the final adoption of it, what we will be faced with as council members is to ensure that plans that come before us meet what we have in our master plan. And again, Thad does a great job of making sure, you know, to, to inform us that, you know, when things might not jive, which they almost never do, and how they mightn't fix, to ensure that they are in compliance with our master plan. So again, beyond a final adoption, it will be when we take votes on things that, especially with regard to development, that they are in compliance with that master plan.
What is your level and experience and comfort with setting, managing, and controlling a budget?
Well, as I alluded to earlier, I currently oversee a budget of about $3 billion. It's a billion with a B. And so it is my job to make sure that we are compliant with federal and state regulations with that, with that budget. In my past life, I've had staff up to 80 staff members, including neurosurgeons, neuro-oncologists. And so I feel as though if I can bring a level of oversight to, to that group of individuals, I can bring that level of oversight and responsibility to the city council as well. Again, I think that this is really about a collaboration between city council and the city, and it is truly my goal just to provide my expertise in these areas back to the community, not as though I want to change something or, or come in and have these broad, bold ideas. It's really to give back to the community, utilize the expertise, education, and experience that I have to give back to my community.
So as a member of the council, I've been through the budget process about eight times, and luckily, we have experts, our treasurer, city manager, who do the vast majority of the work here. By, you know, getting with the different departments well in advance of setting the budget to find out what their goals are, what their needs are, and then put it together. And Linda does a great job of, you know, make sure we have adequate fund balances. So there's not too much that I need to do personally as a council member. We also have regular audits every year. In fact, I think we have a report coming up fairly soon by outside auditors who tell us, you know, that, you know, we're in compliance, we have adequate funds, we're meeting all the general rules of accounting that have to be met. And so I'm, I'm very comfortable that our process works well. I don't drill down into, you know, line items of departments, spending this, that, or the other thing. I trust them to put those together and our city manager to have the vast majority of the oversight on those.
I believe, you know, with any type of a budget, any type of a forecast, any type of a master plan, you need to drill down into the overall budget of what you're trying to accomplish. And the expertise I could bring to there is I do that on a daily, weekly, monthly, yearly basis, you know, for the last 20 years of my life, that's what I've done in business. And, you know, I've also realized that you can have the best budget, you can have the best plan in the world, and then all of a sudden you start something and then that changes, whether it means, you know, something as simple as putting up a stop sign that you think you're just gonna drill a hole into the ground and put in a new sign, costs you $400, come to find out you're drilling next to a pipe and all of a sudden it's $2,000. So the best plan, even the best budget in the world, sometimes doesn't overcome for that. So you have to be able to adapt on the fly and be able to budget and plan and change and be able to adapt to the situation that arises, and that's something I've done my entire life.
That concludes all of our questions tonight. I comment again, much like the school board, these are folks that are competing for an unpaid job. They're a little different than the school board in that every other municipality that you're familiar with in the area, every township, every other village around the area, does have paid council members or trustees. They're also in a nonpartisan position, just like the school board, which is, brings a healthy attitude to this community. So look it over closely. You've got some people who answered questions very quickly and very well for all of us tonight, and we appreciate it. And I, again, ask that we give them a hand of applause. That's all you have.
So I'll just reiterate something that I answered in the questionnaire, and that is, okay, I've lived in this community for a long time. I've gotten to know so many of you, a lot of you, luckily for me, you know, at the, at the leadership level and the people who are involved in the community in a, in a visible way. I've raised my family here in Rockford, love the community, seen it grow tremendously. And over the last three years, since COVID, with the shutdowns, with the closings and everything that happened, I got out in the community with my dog certainly every single day, several times a day, I guess. And I just really appreciate more and more what a fabulous community we have. I mentioned my kids who live nearby, but one is in Comstock Park, one's over in the Cascade area. They come to Rockford to walk around because they just love the charm of this community. It's a very walkable community. It's a beautiful community. There's, you know, great restaurants and shops to participate in or take part in. A lot of community activities that, you know, so many of you here are instrumental in supporting and putting on. Fabulous area by the dam. I see more and more people there every night. That's really become a great focal point for the community, as well as our white pine trail, our, our river. We have some unique features here in Rockford and I think maybe a unique community spirit as well. And I am so happy to have been a part of that and I, I will continue to be a part of that whether or not I'm on the city council. So, thank you.
Thank you all for coming. It was nice to be here. It's nice to have you up here with us also. I'm just really excited for this opportunity. This community, I've only been here five years, but like I said, it's, you know, something that I jumped into headfirst. It's, it's amazing here. I love this area, love this town, love all the different events in this town. I love the parks. I love my neighbors, got to meet a whole bunch of them, gonna meet a whole bunch more. The schools, you know, the athletics, you know, with, with my children playing sports, both of them, my daughter's cheerleader, my son played tennis and hockey, get to know a bunch of great people through there. And just being in this community and the chance to give back is really important to me and my family, because this is the place we're gonna finish the rest of our lives at. So this opportunity, I don't take lightly and I thank you all.
Thank you, Neil. Thank you for hosting. Thank you to Rockford, and thank you to all of you. Most of you have sent through two of these presentations now, so thank you for, for your time this evening. It is very important. Look, I'm running for the Rockford City Council as, as a nonpartisan, and that's the only way that I agreed to be able to, to run for a city council. I truly believe it is the city council's job to be nonpartisan and representative of the community that we serve. I don't believe that, I would say that, given the heat and level of discord that we are currently experiencing in our country, that I, that I don't want to have that happening here at our city level, that I want to be a collaborative and community-oriented member of the city council to ensure that we are working together as a community to support all of Rockford, not just some of our own best interests. And so I feel as though with my experience, living downtown Rockford and utilizing all of the wonderful services that we have to offer here, I really feel as though I can bring that to the, to the city council and really augment the skills that Thad has and our city employees have and just really be a support person for them, but also be the voice of the people of the city of Rockford, irregardless of what your political beliefs are, irregardless of what's happening at the national level. What I've heard most about the city of Rockford is we have a Mayberry. And every time you look at start of summer or the Harvest Festival, you really get that vibe and, and you really, you really feel the love that we have for our community and one another during those events. So thank you to the Rockford Chamber of Commerce for, for putting all of those things on, and thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight.
Couple other thank yous that are owed tonight before we leave. This audience all night has been exceptionally courteous, polite, and respectful, which seems to be a rarity nowadays. And you can't believe how much our committee was concerned about those kinds of issues, which is where another set of thank you comes in that may have had an effect, but we've got security here tonight. Rockford Public Schools Security's been here, Rockford Police Department's been here, the Kent County Sheriff have been here. And we just thank all of you for your continued service, but tonight in particular that you were here in case we had any issues. So with that, drive safely and, and think thoughtfully about what you, how you vote for the next few days. Thank you.